Yes, you did. How'd I do without it? So, welcome, everybody, to the, what is today? The 18th of June zoning board of appeals meeting, which is our, gonna be our workshop on roles and responsibilities of planning boards and zoning boards. And it's great to have the planning board here. Nice opportunity for us to kind of get to know one another. I think we should start with perhaps Mark Cool and then just go around with everyone, just introducing themselves very briefly, so we all know who each other are.
I'm Mark Cool, associate member of the zoning board, and have been on the zoning board now for almost two years.
John Sutherland, I'm an associate member of the zoning board.
TJ Hurry, I'm the clerk of the CBA, and I've been on since about November.
And Ken Foreman, if anyone doesn't know, and I spent, I think, a decade on the planning board and then defected to the zoning boards.
Hi, I'm Kim Bealan. I'm the vice chair of the zoning board, and I've been on for just over a year, I guess, or a year, year and a half.
My name's Paul Murphy, and I'm a brand-new member of the Board of Appeals, and this is my first meeting.
Hey, Van Kuren, member since April.
I'm Paul Dreyer, member of the planning board for about four years.
Bob Leary, since 2009, just got re-elected to a three-year term, so gonna be sticking around for a while.
And Jim Fox, I'm in the middle of my second term.
Pat Kerfoot, vice chair, and I'm going into my 15th year. I'm the old one now.
Ken Naderis, I started on the planning board in 2009, had a couple of year break, and now back on.
Okay, so you can see we have a fairly new zoning board of appeals, which doesn't necessarily mean that some of us aren't fairly experienced in land use issues. Paul, for example, is, I guess you're the building commissioner, and does that also include zoning enforcement?
It does, yes.
In Dartmouth. And so, to start out, Brian asked to be introduced to introduce today's speaker. Hmm? Town planner, Brian Curry. I think everybody knows who Brian is.
Hi, I'm Brian Curry, two of the revenue sources. This is great, we put this together, the roles and responsibilities, it comes through the Massachusetts Planning Training Collective, we've given some of these tutorials before. Tonight, your trainer is gonna be Joel Bard, he's an attorney with Copeland Page. Joel has been a trainer for CPTC for many years, he presents this module throughout the Commonwealth, I'm very pleased to have him here tonight. I had to, Joel, the administrator at CPTC, to assure we got the, Joel, on down, and I know he does a great job. So with that, I'm going to depart, and you're gonna have Joel take over. Learn, 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 and hope we go through exciting adventures. All right, thanks, Brian.
So just by additional brief background, Brian was mentioning, certainly, you retire, I should be thinking of retirement one of these days. I'm approaching 30 years in Copeland Page. Before that, I worked with, actually, the Boston Area Regional Planning Agency, the Metropolitan Planning Council, transportation planning, all theoretically is aware, but it was sometimes hard to identify the legal pieces of what I was doing, but it was pretty interesting work. And so, as you may know, Copeland Page represents, actually, a lot of Cape Towns and about a third of the municipalities around the state. And so, I represent some municipalities, but my particular area of specialty is land use stuff, zoning subdivision, that kind of thing. And as Brian mentioned, I do a lot of these trainings, and I may mention a couple as we go through, because there are sub-trainings, and Brian mentioned you've had some of them, but sub-trainings on many of the topics we'll be talking about here. Some of the individual topics themselves have two-hour segments, particularly for zoning boards, you know, non-conforming uses of structures, and that's particularly a deep one, and also vested rights, things that are protected in different parts of the zoning act. But tonight, we're gonna do the overview, so try to get through it in a couple of hours, mainly because I think after a couple of hours, I can actually keep going and have some Fidel Castro in me, but I know your tolerance will be waning probably well before two hours. But I'll be happy to take questions, but I'll try to keep it moving as well, because there are a lot of different topics here. So what you have is the, on the front, are copies of all of these slides, and then in back are some handouts of mine that Brian was good enough to copy, and I'll refer to them, copy and add into the package, and I'll refer to them when they're relevant to the slide in question. But why don't we jump right in? And I actually ambitiously gave myself a little timetable here, I'll try to keep to. So, let's see if I get this right. There we go. So we're a home rule state, and a vast majority of land use decisions are made at the local level. I mean, just briefly, what it means to be a home rule state is that, it means that municipalities have the ability to enact any kind of local bylaw or regulation, or if you're a city, it's ordinance, that's not inconsistent with state law. In states that are not home rule, you only have those powers that are specifically vested to you by the legislature. We used to be a non-home rule state, but the voters, actually, by petition, gosh, I'm forgetting, I want to say back in the 60s, passed the home rule amendment, and so we've been a home rule state ever since. There are state and federal exceptions and exemptions to local control, I mean, we can't regulate federal buildings, we can't regulate state uses, a very interesting case making its way through the courts in Cambridge. Actually, I think the case that was cited to and determined the outcome of this Cambridge case was a post office case from Falmouth, Durkin, does that ring a bell, I think? So the, just in a nutshell, in Cambridge, you've been in East Cambridge where that mall is, there's a very tall building that's way out of scale with everything else, and it was built as a courthouse and jail facility for Middlesex County, and it's about 25, 30 stories high, where everything else is, you know, residential scale by and large. And the county moved out, there were asbestos issues, and they moved all their functions elsewhere, and then it was put on the market through a bidding process, the developer wants to convert it, and some property owners right around there said, wait, you can't take advantage... Actually, at the time, there was no height limit, so the height is not conforming, the height is not conforming, but the height was not illegal at the time. But the floor area ratio significantly violated Cambridge zoning, but because it was a state building, they could go ahead and do it. And now, what this lawsuit is about, which is decided in light court, is whether it can now be turned into a private facility despite the, and take advantage of the floor area ratio illegality, if you will, which was, it's not illegal, it was built through a state exemption. Anyway, so that's just some background on what could come up in the second bullet. So the Chapter 48 is the zoning act, not the zoning enabling act, it's an important distinction. So, it was called the zoning enabling act, and then it was largely rewritten in 1973. By 1973, the home rule amendment had been passed, and once we had home rule powers, it didn't need to be enabled anymore by the legislature, so it became the zoning act. And every now and then, some relatively inexperienced lawyer in land use matters will refer to it as the zoning enabling act, and it's kind of a sort of aha, you know, that person's not been around long enough. And that's really, when this, it's an important distinction, it's really, that's the distinction. The enabling was no longer needed because it's a home rule state, and so we don't need to be enabled anymore. And there are many other laws, rules, regulations, besides zoning subdivision, that have a relationship to local land use issues, and that gets alluded to later on. So this is the outline of what we're covering tonight, we're only doing part one. Part two, absolutely, is an evening by itself. In fact, each one of those topics is certainly an hour by itself, and I've done all three in an evening, and four, really, it's really three, and it's a lot of material. So, we'll jump right in. Welcome to the board, and I guess for some of you, Paul in particular, brand-new welcome, but, so here's what's useful for an effective board member to know. You want to know the authority of the board, and your board's duties, how the board operates, how it should operate, some of these things, of course, you get a feel for as you've been on the board for a while. Legal aspects of board conduct, regulations, laws, and plans applicable to your board. That point is quite important. I mean, the laws part, both of you I know are not lawyers, but, so, you'll learn the laws over time, but it is important to know your own regulations, your own bylaws, be familiar with the town's master plan, subdivision regulations, if you're on the planning board, your own board, your board's rules and regulations, and the fundamental state laws. I brought with me, you used to be able to get these, the Department of Housing and Community Development used to send these out, now you can download them, but this is my very dog-eared version of the zoning act, and slightly less dog-eared, but also well-used version of the subdivision control law. If you go on the state's website, eventually find your way to DHCD, you can find these and print them out. And actually, what's useful about these, I mean, I find it handy to have it, because I have my own notes in here and things I've stuffed in here, but there are marginal notes. So for instance, Chapter 48, Section 5, you know, here's the text, but I don't know if you can see out in the margin, there are little describers, you can find your way through a 10 paragraph section if you, once you get to know it a little bit, just to find your way quickly to the paragraph in question. Oops, did I turn this, I guess we go this way. So, yeah, so in town hall, there are a lot of people who have a role in one way or another in the work that you do. The town clerk, I think fittingly, is the first one. So the town clerk is the timekeeper, not that the clerk, it's a passive role, if you will. So all of the applications that you act on, copies have to be filed with the town clerk. And nearly all the applications that you act on, and probably everyone, has a statutory time limit. So if something has to be acted on, like a variance within 100 days, day one is the day that it gets filed in the town clerk's office and stamped there. So, sometimes somebody will come to a planning board meeting and drop something off the planning board, but they won't go to the town clerk's office the next day, that clock hasn't started yet, and when we talk about A and R, approval not required plans, you only have three weeks to act on those 21 days. But that 21-day clock only starts from the day it got stamped in at the town clerk's office. So the town clerk is the official repository and stamper of documents in terms of knowing what that calendar's going to be. And so filings occur there, postings, postings really are just open meeting law postings, as far as we're concerned. Building inspector typically, Paul, I assume you've been the zoning enforcement officer, wherever you've been, building inspector, and that's normally the case, not 100% of the time, but certainly probably in the 90s, generally around the state. And by the way, it's defined in your, so it's not automatic, it's defined in your zoning bylaw, who is the zoning enforcement officer. As I said, it's nearly always the building inspector, planner, planning department, staff support, you're lucky to have that, we represent towns. The one town, the second smallest town, you guys would know the smallest town in the state? One of the Elizabeth Islands, Noshan.
That's right.
They have, I think, 60 people or so. So the town of Mount Washington has 134 or 5 year-round residents, and they get really big in summer, they have about 400 in the summer. But we have some really small towns, but even towns with 2,000, 3,000, and 4,000 residents don't have planning staff typically. Conservation commission gets involved in weapons protection, and conservation issues generally, open space planning sometimes, Board of Health, Title V's, they play a very important role in subdivision review, historic commission, historic districts, and anyway, you can see it there, but those are really the highlights. So, by statute, planning board can have five, seven, or nine members, obviously, you have what you have, again, it's defined in your local bylaw, sometimes defined in charter rather than in the bylaw, it's usually in the zoning bylaw as well. I gather yours is elected, but in some towns, they're appointed. Now, look, I just skimmed the bylaw, it looks like, is the planning board ever a special permit granting authority? You are for certain things. So, 'cause I think the default is the zoning board, right? That's what the bylaw says. So when you, when the planning board is a special permit granting authority, you can have associate members, but they only sit for special permit matters, and also for site plan review, again, if you choose to do it that way. And designated by chair, oh, I'll mention this, this comes up again, but what they're referring to there is the associate member participating is designated by the chair. So, a town, a large town, actually, with a very professional planning staff, that we've now represented for about 10 years, but two or three years in, I got a call from one of the town planners who said, well, we have a hearing coming up next week, and so and so, and so, and so, and so, or sitting, it's a three-member board with two or three alternates. And I said, well, two of those are alternates, you know, how do you know where the other two are gonna be way? Well, no, we've just designated those people for certain reasons. Well, the statute, oh, well, we'll have to wait for another slide that says it, but the statute makes clear that alternate or associate members can only sit in the case of absence or illness or whatever of, or vacancy of a member, and not because you want a certain panel for, or you don't want a certain panel for a hearing. Basically, if your five members are available, that's who's sitting. Not, in fact, I mean, so it turned out, so they would actually have the five members there and the alternates, and then one of the members would come and sit in the audience for no apparent reason, and an alternate would sit in for arbitrary reasons, anyway, so we've cleaned that up. But there is a slide that, oh, here it is, right here. So zoning board's three or five members, typically appointed, so the associate member can act only in the case of absence, inability to act, conflict, or vacancy, and those are the only reasons. One of the towns we represent, so all of this, this is state law, but a charter has the effect of state law. And one of our towns, the town of Sturbridge, has a seven-member zoning board of appeals. I can never get this quite right, but let's say three are elected and four are appointed. And, see, it says three or five members. So we actually had a case where a permit had been granted, and the butler challenged it and said, oh, and among other things, the zoning board's not legal, you're not supposed to have seven members, and they also questioned what the, if the proper quorum, quantum had been met out of seven members and all of that. Anyway, it all, we won on those issues, but a charter can vary from what's in the state law. Now, the planning board's powers and duties, one is, and these, again, will be covered in detail, so we'll dwell on them now, but to prepare and adopt a master plan, to develop and work on, hold hearings on zoning amendments, to be a special permit granting authority, subdivision control is a whole area that's just reserved to planning boards, obviously special permit granting authority. Can not only be zoning boards and planning boards, can also be boards of selectmen. I never understand why, why a board of selectmen in particular would want to be a special permit granting authority, or really, why towns would want to put boards of selectmen in that position, but it does happen. Approval not required plans, that's obviously part of the subdivision control law, review and act on site plan reviews, that's true in like 98% of the cases. There are some instances where there are zoning boards, well, I can only think of one, but it's pretty unusual. Repetitive petitions, the, that's when somebody wants to come back, they've been denied, they want to come back sooner than two years, actually, both the zoning board and planning boards have to approve that. And scenic roads, and the shade trees, the statute puts that under the planning board. Then further, to review applications, make recommendations to the zoning board of appeals for special permits, comprehensive permits, that's a really important function, even though it's the zoning board, particularly for comprehensive permits, you know, Chapter 40B, affordable housing projects, really important to get planning board review as well as input from other town boards. Again, input on historic district issues and tax classification land, when somebody wants to remove property from Chapter 61, then 61, 61A, the different chapter lands. The planning board can provide input to the board of selectmen as to whether the property's gonna have value for the town, whether the town should pursue acquiring the land. Under the Community Preservation Act, I assume, as the town adopted the CPA?
Yeah.
So, a member of the planning board sits on the CPA committee, that says Chapter 44, that should be 44B, but it's not a big deal. And to initiate planning projects and plans and other duties and so forth, this may arise. Now, again, overview of zoning board's powers, so to be the permit granting authority, that's a term that's defined in the zoning act, but it's really synonymous with zoning board, but occasionally the phrase permit granting authority gets used in the zoning act, but it really just means zoning board of appeals. To hear and decide appeals in accordance with Chapter 48, Section 8. So those are appeals, and as I recall, that's not dealt with further in the slides, so I'll just mention a couple things about it. So those are appeals of decisions of the building inspector, and I imagine you've dealt with those over the years, and Paul, maybe you've dealt with it as a person whose decisions have been appealed, but the, in a sense, I don't know if you feel like the defendant when that happens, but I know some building inspectors feel strongly, they want to be there, they want to defend their decision.
No, not too much. It's quite rare in my case where I'd be appealed, but I usually try to resolve those matters. But it has happened, but they're generally friendly appeals.
Oh, yeah, well, boy, I've seen my share of quite unfriendly appeals.
Oh, sure.
Yeah. But in any event, the zoning board has the same 100-day clock that you do for variances, and the, in one of those appeals, the zoning board's decision has to be unanimous to overturn the decision of the zoning enforcement officer. Then to act on special permits, as called out in the zoning bylaw, and to act on variances. And, here, I don't...
A quick question, is it always the case that the building commissioner serves as the zoning enforcement?
No. No, as I was saying, it's nearly always the case, but it's not automatic. I mean, for instance, in Watertown has, the city known as the town of Watertown, they have a zoning enforcement officer who's not the building inspector, and there are, I mean, typically it is larger communities where that's the case, but doesn't have to be, and it is...
Is that designated in the town charter?
No, just in the bylaws. Yeah, I have not seen it as a charter provision. And I've seen it temporarily, I remember one town administrator was getting so frustrated with, I don't know if, Paul, it's been your experience, but I'd say that for most building inspectors, zoning enforcement is kind of low down in their priorities, and one town administrator, when, I think it was the third building inspector he'd had under him, he couldn't get any of them to really be strict about enforcement, he said, you know what, I'm gonna be the zoning enforcement officer, and he got the board of selectmen to designate him the zoning enforcement officer, and it lasted about three months. So it wasn't so much fun. To make findings on non-conforming uses and structures, now, I don't know, Ken, I think you're the one who's been there the longest, but I assume you see a lot of those, that's for most zoning boards, kind of your heaviest business, if you will.
Yeah, I believe something like 80% or so of the properties in town have some non-conform...
Yeah, exactly. Particularly...
Pre-existing.
Closer in, right? Yeah, yeah, so, most zoning boards, that's mainly what they do, and it's tricky stuff, and I will, we have time, talk a little bit about a case on that. So to act on comprehensive permits, Chapter 40Bs, and then eight, nine more, you know, advisory kinds of roles, but, you know, always important as well. Now, board rules and regulations, the, I made some notes for myself here, the, so boards should have adopted rules and regulations. Now, that first bullet, the board of appeals shall adopt rules, rules, excuse me, so that's a quote right out of the zoning act, it actually requires that you have rules, and there's gonna be another slide in a minute that talks about what generally go in the rules. The second bullet, so there's no such burden, if you will, on the planning board, it's still a good idea, but there's not a state law saying you have to do it. But the third bullet says that special permit granting authorities are required to have rules relative to the issuance of special permits. So it's a good idea, I don't know if you have rules, yeah, it's good practice. So here's what typically goes in, so you can compare your rules to this as sort of a checklist, but the role of the chair, for instance, the issue of the designation of which alternate sits when there's a vacancy, on occasion, has been contentious. I mean, these kinds of questions, you can go through three years of hearings and nothing comes up, but, you know, the really sticky one comes up, the room's filled to overflowing, and sure enough, you've got to appoint an alternate, and, you know, this one's definitely in favor of it, and this one's probably gonna vote against it, and so everybody thinks, and so if you appoint this one, then everybody says, oh, that means the chair is in favor of the project, or opposes the project, whatever. So some boards actually have set up a system, just actually, just a chronological system, you just have the associates listed in the order that, of seniority, if you will, and then the first, most senior person gets appointed first, and the next one, and you just keep that cycle up as they are available, so that way there's no, you know, no suggestion of favoritism or trying to game the system on the part of the chairman. Anyway, I know some boards have turned to that after it's become touchy in the case of a controversial project. So anyway, these are the kinds of issues that you could want to address in your regulations. So, the public hearing process, there should be a clear purpose, legal notice at a minimum in accordance with state statutes, convenient time and location, clear agenda, clear and stated process for holding the hearing. Let me stop here and say, one of the, a public hearing gets started is based on an application, and the application is what the board looks at to figure out what the applicant's looking for. But you design the application form, so if you're finding that you're, you know, you're having a hard time understanding what exactly the applicant's looking for, I mean, again, in most cases, it's obvious, but if you find sometimes unclear, you may want to look at your form again, and again, maybe this isn't, hasn't been a problem for you, but I know boards have gone back after a couple of bad experiences, have said, wait a minute, you know, we should be asking for, you know, what sections of the bylaw are you under, you know, are you looking to be, have varied, or if, for subdivision approval, if they're looking for waivers, have you asked that they be called out, that sort of thing. So, going back to that very first bullet, a clear purpose, well, the purpose of your public hearing will be made clear if your application clearly looked for the applicant to call out the necessary information. So again, that seems true for the clear and stated purpose for holding the hearing, the chairperson can guide the hearings, again, all this stuff is easy until you have the contentious hearing, and that's what everybody's skills, if you will, come to the fore, if you've got them, and if you don't, maybe that's when you develop them. If you've got them, and if you don't, maybe that's when you develop them. You owe. Information available to all, of course. Adequate time allotted for public comments and permanent record of actions taken. Important considerations. I think all of those are fairly obvious. The hearing procedure is important. It's important that people feel they're all being heard. You know, there might be, again, room full of neighbors, the applicant comes and is prepared to spend the entire evening, you know, describing their project. So, you know, first there's the developer, and then there's the engineer, and then there's the wetlands person, and that. And so what I always suggest is you talk to the applicant beforehand and say, "Well, looks like you've got a lot of information for us. Why don't you take the first 45 minutes to at least get the main project out? Then we'd like to hear from some of the residents."
We actually have a stated policy.
Excellent.
15 minutes for the applicant.
Wow.
Extension by vote of the board.
Wow.
Just for residence.
Yeah, well, that's, that's great. I mean, it's short. I imagine for a big project...
It's short, makes them get succinct.
Yeah, good.
And, you know, then we have questions, and we can go on for quite a period of time.
Well, that actually makes a lot of sense, because clearly, when you ask a question, then they might give you a 15-minute answer, because they didn't get to the wetlands part or whatever. But, yeah, that's, that's good. Yeah, because it's, you know, the situation, I've seen it, where all the residents at 10:30 at night finally file out after...
Well, not just the residents, the board as well. We found that, I think, some attorneys like to wax long, and part of that was a strategy to tire everybody up.
Now, I'm sure it's the engineers, not the attorneys.
Yeah.
Uh-oh, some engineers there.
Can I ask you a question there?
Sure, yes.
What is your suggestion for the chairman of the board when he has a public, he or she has a public hearing and is getting out of hand? What role can that individual play that would be helpful in that situation?
Well, yeah, that's really important. So the first thing is, one of the ways in which it gets out of hand is people start calling out from here, like it's a neighbor who's, or whatever, whoever it might be. Or it might be that residents are commenting and the applicants are being very unprofessional and they're coming out. So you, you know, you bang the gavel, and you say, "I'm sorry, but all comments come in through the chair." And if you haven't been recognized by the chair, you can't speak. And if, "I'm not seeing you, I apologize," and just, you know, stand up if you're back and haven't seen your hand, "I apologize." So please, you know, get up, say, "Mr. Chairman," and, you know, I'll, I'll either call on you, or I'll say, "Okay, fine, I've seen you, and I'll get to you in a minute," or whatever. That, in my experience, is how meetings get out of hand, is that people are calling out. And then...
We try to also state those ground rules at the beginning of the meeting before any information's been exchanged.
Yeah.
You know, must be recognized by the chair. Go to the podium, state your name for the record. All comments directed through the chair and only at the project. Derogatory remarks.
Right, right. And that, that really should cover it. I mean, and other than that, if somebody's just plain being unruly, you can ask them to leave. And the open meeting law does state that a chair can ask a person to leave the meeting if they're being disruptive. It's right in the open meeting law, and you can...
Have you ever seen where they would suspend the public hearing? Tell the public to leave and continue without the public?
No.
On TV?
Can't do that. Cannot do that. That'd be a violation of the open meeting law. And what you can do is just say, "Look, folks, we're just going to have to suspend the hearing and pick it up another night, but this is unacceptable." But I would think that that, you know, if, usually, again, if you have the clear rules of everything having to come through the chair, and then if, by the way, you know, you've, well, so for instance, let's say you have to do that. Next time, you get one of your police officers here, and you read that section of the, and I'd be happy to email it to Brian Rosarian, read that section of the open meeting law and say, "I've got Officer Jones back here, and if anybody's unruly, I'm going to ask him to, to remove you." And actually, it says the person can be detained. And there was a town meeting, in this one town, there was a woman who objected to, an elderly woman who'd been a UMass professor, was out in that part of the state, who was a pretty colorful, interesting woman. She disliked having, they would have invitations from different clergy in the valley who would come. And she'd go, "Mr. Moderator, Mr. Moderator, point of order, point of order. What's your point of order?" "Separation of church and state." And every time, I have to get up and say, you know, "It's not, not a violation." And so she'd let him know before one meeting that she wasn't going to take it anymore, and he said, "Fine, you know, I'm going to have the police chief here." Anyway, so he asked the chief, said, "Chief, would you mind removing Mrs. So-and-so?" And, and he did. And she walked out, you know, continuing her spiel. But halfway through the meeting, and so he had read beforehand that section of the law which said it can be detained until the end of the meeting. Halfway through the meeting, somebody gets up and says, "Mr. Moderator, point of order." And he said, "What's your point of order?" He said, "Can Mrs. So-and-so be released now?" You know, under the law, theoretically, it was being confined somewhere. Anyway, so, yeah, I think it's a firm hand, but really, there's no, really no excuse for that to be tolerated. There's no reason for it to be tolerated. You can just have the, the one or two people who are going to be the troublemakers just have them removed.
What if they're on the board?
You'll have to have a conference among yourselves and do some soul searching.
It's always more harmonious.
So the, so quorum is the number of board members required to meet and make a decision. So it's, they're, they're two different numbers. So I assume for both your boards, the quorum. I mean, unless, bylaws can occasionally set a higher quorum, but I've never seen a zoning board or a planning board that has a higher quorum requirement than a simple majority. But the quantum of vote, particularly for zoning boards in many instances, is higher. So the general rule is the majority of a board is a quorum, and the majority of a quorum may act. And the extension counts towards the quorum. And the majority is the number of votes needed from the quorum. So if you have five people voting, then you need three positive votes. If you have a five-member board, only three members show up, then two to one is sufficient. Now, one of the, so at the back of your, of these slides, I've mentioned there are some documents attached. So we periodically publish these, it says a memorandum to municipal clients. There's one that I wrote about a case, McEldery versus Nantucket, I think it is, that had to do with subdivision controller. Yeah, it's the second, you don't need to look at it now, but I think it'll be useful to look at just to get this quorum and quantum stuff down. So there's this case, McEldery versus the Planning Board of Nantucket, in which frankly, and I was willing to be quoted in our Mass Lawyers Weekly publication that goes out of the lawyers statewide, when this case came out 15 years ago now, that experienced land use lawyer was really surprised by this outcome, because I think the SJC got it wrong. But they read, so it had always been my view, five-member planning board, three people show up, and it comes time to actually vote on approval of the subdivision plan, then a two-to-one vote was sufficient. But they read two sections together, I think inartfully, to say that it had to be a majority of the members. That means you need three out of five. So if only three people showed up, it's got to be unanimous. And the, in doing it, there's, there's language, there are definitions in the subdivision controller that talk about endorsing a plan. So endorsement requires a majority of the board. So let's say the planning board did approve it one night on a, not Ken anymore, on a two-to-one vote. When it, when the plan comes and is laid out in front of you on the table for you to sign, actually endorse the plan, then we always advise that it took at least three members to endorse the plan, because the statute said so. But I think there's a difference between endorsing the plan and voting to approve. But in any event, the SJC has said that for approving subdivision plans, it takes three out of five, not the normal rule that, that third bullet, the general rule, a majority of the board is a quorum, and a majority of a quorum may act. So the last bullet, extraordinary voting requirements, the, well, some are by statute, but there are others that, well, for instance, so this is now one in terms of how the subdivision controller has been interpreted, and clearly, special permits have to be, well, it says four out of five. Wow, that's wrong. Or it says two-thirds vote, it has to be three out of three on a zoning board. Gosh, I should point that out.
That's strictly for a three-member board, though.
For a three-member board, yeah.
For a five-member board, that's...
Yeah. Oh, it does say, sorry, it says unanimous for a three-member board at the end. Sorry, there we go. Yeah, so that is correct. Good. So there are different quantum requirements.
Now, just where do those requirements come from? State statute or the courts?
Statute. The, so, yeah, I misled you maybe by talking so much about that court case. All of the others are statute. So the zoning act specifically says that a variance must be unanimous on a three-member board, or four out of five on a five-member board. Special permits, well, basically, what, what it says there for special permits.
Comprehensive or comprehensive?
The comprehensive permits are simple majority. Yeah. Interesting.
Yeah, I think that's bizarre.
So, so just for my own clarification, an endorsement for passage needs unanimous vote?
For the same.
Um, sorry. For, for passage of what? To, to approve? See, it depends what's before you.
An A and R, sorry.
An A and R, that's simple majority.
That's simple majority.
Yeah.
But let's say a special permit. A special permit for our board, which has five members...
Right, so it's...
Would require five voting members at any one time, right? Would, would have four required.
Four yes votes.
Now, if there's only four people present, this is when you get into this case that you were talking about.
Well, no. So the four is absolute. It's right in the statute.
Okay.
So if the statute says five-member board, you need four votes.
So then it's unanimous, which does put the applicant always in a kind of a tight position, because...
It is a quorum.
It is a quorum, right? So the applicant might ask you, in fact, it's something, as a courtesy, we suggest, you know, if we get a call from staff, from the chairman, saying, "We're going to have four members tonight," I say, "You know what? Call the applicant, give him a heads up, and ask if, excuse me, do you want to, you know, be put off to our next meeting?"
We're so good, we do that.
Yeah, exactly.
We don't call them in advance, but when they're here...
That's fine.
They come in, they come in and they do ask, and I do inform them if I do know a board member's on.
Right, but if they're here, we usually say...
The board will do it, that four is a quorum, and the board will continue.
Right. We proffer that often with applicants. "We have four here, do you wish to go forward tonight?"
Well, and I think it's a good idea to give that, because...
We do. I think we do.
We have it in bed a few years.
I bet a few went back over it.
We have recently.
Yeah. You know, it's a good, it's a good precaution, because with only four needing unanimous, you might end up denying a permit that otherwise you would have approved, and then you might have a court case on your hands, which, you know, is fine for town council, or not even. I mean, we'd never like to try a case, I mean, not that we're your council, but we'd never like to try a case that would have, a denial that would have been approved but for the fact that the fifth person wasn't there. And so usually, what ends up happening is we remanded to give it a shot at a full five-member board. So it's, I mean, it's in everybody's interest to give the applicant a shot at a full board so that they can lose one vote and still not be sunk. So remote participation has, so remote participation is available in a town where the board of selectmen has put it in place. Has that happened here? Moving right along. In case you're interested, because it has happened in some towns where, in fact, in Lincoln, to their credit, the board of selectmen was not interested, and they asked me to come to a meeting, to which they'd invited all the main land use boards, and asked them, they said, "We're not interested, but maybe you all are." And they all said, "Hell, yeah, you know, we, we do want the ability to continue," because, you know, you might have hearings that go several sessions, and you'd just soon be able to have somebody participate remotely. And so they adopted it. So if there is an interest among your boards, if it happens that, for instance, particularly the planning board, where you generally are operating without alternates, if you're finding you're having to put stuff off because somebody's traveling at different times of year, whatever, otherwise, you can let it be, but it is the selectmen's call, and it is a convenience if, again, if the board runs into that problem.
The playoffs are on or something.
The playoffs are on, yeah, there's a good reason. They're all over, right? Hockey and basketball are done, so no excuse. The Mullen Rule. This is also a local option of a different kind. This has to be accepted by town meeting. So the Mullen Rule is based on a case, Mullen versus the Planning Board of Brewster, where the courts said what was pretty clear already, but when you all act on these permits, you're acting in a quasi-judicial manner, which is to say you're acting like a court, like a judge. And just as a judge can't act on a matter that he or she didn't sit through, you as a zoning or planning board member can act on something when you missed part of the public hearing. So, and that was made clear in that case, the Mullen case. So the legislature passed this law not that long ago, maybe it's been eight or 10 years now, but it's chapter 39, section 23D, which allows a member to participate after missing one public hearing, and that should really say one session of a public hearing. So if a public hearing went on over three or four nights, somebody missed night two, that person can then pick up again and participate in night three, if that person certifies in writing that he or she reviewed evidence of the missed session. So if there was, if it was televised, if there's a tape of it, if there's a tape recording and review the documentation, then they just write to that effect, and then file that certification with the town clerk, and that person's up to speed, and then they can jump in for session three, and they're good. But it's only good for one session. It, it can be good for an unlimited number of board members, but each member can only miss one session. Has the town accepted that? No. Never mind. Well, you might want to consider that.
So that requires, again, the selectmen to approve?
No, this one's town meeting, you know, it's, don't ask me why one is one way and one the other. Well, this, the, having a legislative act for that is significant, because it overcomes, you know, a significant due process issue, if you will.
That's why I can't...
Now, the constructive grant process, I'm sorry.
Can I just, sorry? For the Mullen Rule, is it based on the same exigencies as the remote participation? So I saw that you said personal illness, emergency, geographic distance, or could it just be board member is out of town and...
Watching the playoffs.
Watching the playoffs, okay.
Right, yeah.
That's kind of interesting.
Yeah, yeah, that's an interesting distinction, yeah. All right, constructive grant. Pretty much every permit that you're asked to rule on, in fact, I can't think of any, well, some bylaws for site plan review, because it's not statutory, don't have a constructive grant provision, but everything, pretty much everything we're talking about. The statute says you must act within 90 days, 100 days, 120 days, whatever it might be. And if you don't, the permit is deemed granted. So it's a pretty harsh remedy. You don't want to have that happen. I mean, the worst course of the A and R plans, where you have 21 days, and, I mean, in some towns, the planning boards meet once a month, you know, so if something comes in between meetings, you got to scurry to, to get that before you and act on it at that, the meeting, the one meeting where you see it. So where a statute provides for the failure to act or to act within a stated period of time, either for holding a hearing or making or filing a decision, a constructive grant or approval of an application may result. Examples are special permits, variances, A and R plans, and so forth. Now, one of the things that I, one of the memos that I included is... Now, one of the things that I, one of the memos that I included is avoiding constructive approvals of subdivision plans and zoning relief, and that first one, I mentioned the other one I wrote, this was written by my former colleague Judith Cutler, who's now actually the chief judge of the Land Court, but Judy wrote this up about a case called Craig versus the Planning Board of Haverhill, and it has to do with subdivision control, but as, as we say here in this memorandum, it would apply, we're sure that the court would apply the same reasoning to any zoning board decision. And here was the important lesson learned from this case. The planning board through subdivision review was, it was dragging on through a number of sessions, and the clock was running out, and the applicant said, "Oh, don't worry, I'll give you an extension." And the planning board noted that in the minutes, so it was documented in the minutes, and then time ran out on the clock, and the applicant shows up the next time, says, "I'm all set, I'm applying for a constructive grant." So, "What do you mean? You gave us an extension, we put it in the minutes." The statute clearly says you need it in writing from the applicant, and it needs to be filed with the town clerk. So nothing short of that. So obviously, this applicant was not a very nice person, but he got his constructive approval. He knew what he was doing, he was a nice person that knew what he was doing, a not-nice person. So, you want to, so that kind of representation, again, even though it was documented in the minutes, not good enough, you want them to sign something, you could just, I've been at meetings, I've written it up myself, and put it in front of the applicant, said, "Here, sign this," and then, you know, make sure somebody filed it with the town clerk the next morning. So, that's the lesson from this, is that not only do you have to watch the clock, but you got to get it in writing, and you have to make sure it gets filed with the town But you can get written extensions for any of these deadlines, just do get it in writing and make sure it's filed with the town clerk. So, this, this is a broader notion here, this is less about the legal deadlines and so forth, and just more about getting public participation in your meetings generally and in your procedures, and so, you know, and this actually gets more, I think, now into, well, no, I guess, yeah, it's just a general principle, just to get more people involved in some of the issues that you're involved in, that you think are important, and not enough people are participating or attending, so these are some of the ways to get people involved if you so choose. So we're not going to cover this tonight. Oh, yeah, this is great, I'll cut to it. Not that it has any application. So, open meeting law, public records law, conflict of interest, significant areas of law that you'll want to become familiar with. Actually, one other thing that I included, it's probably the last of the handouts you have, is an advisory from the State Ethics Commission, and I'll just read the heading, it says, "Voting on Matters Affecting, Abutting, or Nearby Property." And basically, what this is saying is, don't do it. So it is worth reading, particularly if you're relatively new, as I gather a lot of you are, you want to be aware of this. The conflict of interest law is a criminal statute, and it personally affects you. In other words, it doesn't have consequences for your board, it has consequences for you. You can be fined, or imprisoned theoretically, I've seen it happen, although it's very rare, but fines are not rare, and, I should say, when people are found to have violated the conflict of interest statute, they are fined. So you do want to be aware of it, and you want to steer wide and clear on it. I should put it differently, you want to be aware of the statute, but you want to steer wide and clear of conflicts. Okay, the zoning act. So there we have a zoning map of the town of Natick. So, just a brief history, the first sort of national model of a state enabling act was promulgated in the '30s, and, well, Massachusetts, I should say, adopted it in '54, was rewritten. In 1975 is really the chapter that, I mean, the act that we're working with now, it's been amended, I used to say many times, but still, the majority of our zoning act goes back to Chapter 808 of the Acts of 1975. So these are the purposes of zoning generally. They appear in a non-codified section of that Chapter 808. So these are the general purposes of zoning, well, we have the purposes, but the general functions, regulate the use, the pattern appearance of development through zoning districts, dimensional regulations, use requirements, and other regulations. That second bullet, a map's required, of course. Whenever you have a map amendment, you make a slight change to your zoning map, you might move two parcels from a residence district to an adjoining business district, you have to have an accompanying, so you have a text amendment that gets voted on at town meeting, they may or may not have a map, well, you probably have a GIS system, so it's easy enough for you to do it, but some communities don't, don't have that, and so they'll just have a description of it, but the zoning act requires that it be shown on a map, so when it gets submitted to the Attorney General, that it be seen anyway, that's going to happen.
Can you address briefly the idea of spot zoning?
Uh-huh. Okay, well, spot zoning in a nutshell is not just, so I gave an example, actually, of just two lots being rezoned. So the principle is that a, it doesn't even have to be a small spot of land, but that an area of land is rezoned primarily for the benefit or disadvantage of a property owner, and not for any larger general welfare purpose. So the size of the area being rezoned is not the only determinant. Now, the smaller the area being rezoned, the more likely that there'd be scrutiny as to whether or not it's spot zoning. But you can rezone a single lot with perfectly good justification for it.
That's not necessarily contiguous to an existing zone of the same designation?
Well, then there'll be some splaining to do.
Right.
Then there needs to be a rationale for it. Again, not to say that it's automatically spot zoning, it may be, for instance, that they're geographical, for instance, just recently, I gave a town an opinion about a rezoning of, it was three or four lots, but they were being rezoned differently from their abutting lots, and I was told, if you go there, you'll see that there's a steep ridge behind it, and the steep ridge, and then the street in front of it, really cut it off from the rest of its otherwise pretty large district. And sure enough, I mean, there were houses built to the front of these lots, and then they had at least 100 feet behind them in their lots that were just rich, and then the rest of the zoning district was up and over the top. So that, you know, geologically separated those, in that case, four lots, from the rest of a 60 or 70-lot zoning district. So your single parcel perhaps was isolated by wetlands, or other features, or whatever it may be, I mean, I don't know the facts.
What about if there was some, you know, delighted abandoned use, or something like that, where you, where the, in general, the public good is served, but of course, also is the landowner's good is served?
Do I feel myself being painted in a corner here?
No, necessarily, it's just a.
Well, the, yeah, I don't want to, you know, comment on.
Don't pine on any cases, I understand.
Yeah, without knowing all of the facts, but, as I said, certainly, when a single lot is at issue, there needs to be an explanation for why the single lot is called out, and I have seen single lot instances that, for which there was a rationale, but, yeah, clearly.
Usually, isn't there a feature or something that lumps the case along so it's not spot zoning?
There can be a feature, I mean, there, there needs to be a rationale given, I mean, it's a feature, certainly, I mean, I explained when it was clearly a geological feature, but, I mean, there should be a rationale for it. And I think I'll just leave it at that, I don't want to, I don't want to get quoted here, and something I don't know anything about, I mean, factually, that I don't know anything about.
Hold on, I just want to go back to one thing on that issue. We have, what we found is, we, a couple of years ago, we created a new district that hadn't been applied anywhere, so by definition, one lot's going to show up sooner or later anyway. I know if we had said we had a vision to rezone this area, and first we created, we created the district, we don't apply it to the land, but our first step is to create it.
Oh, I see.
And then we start applying it.
Yeah.
Over time, so it's a two-step process. So that's got automatically happened if someone, what happened to us, somebody, we said we'd probably like to do this area, but somebody said, "Well, you know, jeez, I'm in that area, can you rezone me now?" And we had just created the district, and it happened. But there was a public good, there was a vision, a bigger plan, it's going to happen again, too, for the same thing, but that, I think with a new district, that has an opportunity to happen a lot more frequently than just this one lot.
Yeah, well, that would be part of the rationale. I know when cell towers first came around, communities wanted to zone them out entirely because, that many of us had cell phones, and they seemed like a nuisance of all kinds, and so communities created these little spots in the town where they would allow them. Some towns went so far as to make sure those spots were all town-owned land, so the town could get the revenue. But the way we got around the spot zoning was to call it a telecommunications overlay district, and, and then in some instances, actually, the spots, believe it or not, coincided with where the industry said they wanted to locate towers. So, there you did have one property there, and one property there, and the town said, "Well, no, not that one, you know, the tower's going to be visible behind Town Hall," or whatever. So, again, so there, there was a larger rationale, but you did end up with individual spots around town, but in one town I can think of was a very clear rationale, a very clear process to limit where they could go, towns, areas in the town that the town, you know, was tolerant of having the visual blight, if you will, of the towers, but where this need was there, and the visual effect was deemed to be less intrusive than in other parts of town.
How prevalent is telecommunications overlay districts across municipalities in Massachusetts?
Well, there were quite a few back then. What's happened, so originally, I'd be at these hearings, and there'd be four people in the room with cell phones. Then what started to happen over time is, more and more people would show up who had phones, and were complaining that they weren't getting service, and wanted the town to enlarge the district. So now, I mean, there are towns that still have those more defined overlay districts, but as I said, towns have gotten a little more open to having more areas cited, and of course, the technology's changed, but only a little bit. It's funny, I also remember being in those hearings 15 years ago, and people who had some technological background saying, "Ah, this whole thing's ridiculous, in four years, it's all going to be shoeboxes on the sides of buildings," and so far, the shoeboxes haven't replaced the towers, and in fact, now they were walking around holding powerful computers, they need more power and more places to, so that people can watch movies while they're driving 8 miles an hour.
And doing their hair.
And doing their, you could always, it's always been legal to do your hair. It's a bigger worry if you commute to work by bike, as I do, and watch people doing their hair. Those are people I keep a close eye on. So uses can be permitted by right, site plan review, special permit, and variance, and uses can be prohibited. There's a case of a small Berkshire County town that the court upheld it being a purely residential town, no commercial uses allowed, and the court said, "You can do that. Tough on the tax base, but you can do it."
Is the town still in existence?
Yeah, right. I suspect the residential tax rate's pretty high. Adopting, zoning adoption, so, the first of those memos is procedures for adopting and filing zoning amendments, we're going to talk about it a little bit here, but this is something I did a few years ago, but I've updated, as the attached is a three-page outline, and luckily for you, you have staff to worry about these niceties, but the process of adopting a zoning bylaw is called out in great detail in the zoning act, and, so these are some of the highlights here. So, a number of boards or people can initiate a zoning amendment, so the Board of Selectmen can, the Planning Board, the ZBA, the landowner, by petition by the regional planning agencies, so, excuse me, a person whose land is to be affected by a zoning amendment can, a single person can petition to amend the zoning. So that means that if you own one parcel in town, you can file a petition that would change the zoning town-wide, and you can do it by yourself because you've affected your own parcel, that's kind of unusual. Now, that just gets the zoning amendment process going. You then have to follow the separate process of getting it on the town meeting warrant, which requires at least 10 signatures to get an article on annual town meeting. So the two, the two requirements apply, so it can be generated any number of ways. And then it's referred to the Planning Board, and the Planning Board must hold a public hearing within 65 days of the request being submitted to the Planning Board. So the request goes to the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Selectmen refers to the Planning Board, and then within 65 days, you hold a public hearing, and the notice of the hearings published two successive weeks, and notice given to various interested parties and agencies, and then the Planning Board must make a report with recommendations to the town meeting. And what the statute says is that if the planning board hearing has been held within 21 days of the town meeting, the town meeting cannot act unless the Planning Board makes a report with recommendations to town meeting. So I have seen a couple of instances where the Planning Board sort of shrugs and says, "Gee, we never held a hearing," I've only seen that once, or, well, this I haven't seen, but there are two cases where the Planning Board reported to town meeting that they held a hearing, they voted two to two, so they don't have a recommendation, and the court said, "The statute specifically calls for a report with a recommendation, and therefore town meeting couldn't act." And the town meeting had acted, but the court said it wasn't a valid action because there hadn't been a Planning Board recommendation. So, I imagine you routinely provide any report to town meeting, but it's, it's critical if your public hearing was held within three weeks of when town meeting's actually being held. The Planning Board reports just a simple majority action, but then, any zoning change of any kind requires a two-thirds vote of town meeting. And then towns, but not cities, have to submit any zoning amendments to the Attorney General's office for review. So site plan review is a creation of local government, it's not found in the zoning act. There was a case going on, it must be from the '60s, I guess, or so, Y.D. Duckout versus Canton, where Canton come up with this site plan process, I don't know if they were the only ones, but they were the first ones to end up in court, and their process was being challenged, and the court said, "That's fine, that seems like a okay form of review." Subsequent cases have said that site plan review can only be used to review site conditions and to impose conditions to condition the project, but you can't deny it, there's a line in a case, but then there are no cases, there's a line in a case saying, this is the phrase, but, "Under extraordinary circumstances, the, the, the Planning Board can deny site plan approval," but we've never seen a case where a site plan denial was actually upheld. So, essentially, the task is, do you have site plan approval, I assume?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, just to condition it, move the driveway here, you know, change your parking configuration, more landscaping, some, do you have design-type controls in your site plan review?
We just changed it.
Just to add that?
We just took it back, yes.
Yeah, yeah, it's not uncommon. And, yeah, that's.
Took it back from design review?
Yep.
Yeah.
So do they still make a recommendation review, or they're out of the thing altogether?
In designs.
Okay.
Interesting, yeah, and that back and forth.
Last town meeting.
I must have voted it.
You did?
So the, that fourth bullet, the process, the timeline, the decision-making, all of that's determined in the local bylaw, traditionally used for by right uses to review site and design issues, but next bullet, sometimes used part of special permit process, I'd say today you see it sometimes standing alone, sometimes in with a special permit process. And you want to have well-written, comprehensive standards for. And you wanna have well-written, comprehensive standards for site and design issues. Special permits, so we talked about some of this. The second bullet, so Chapter 48, Section 3 calls out a variety of areas where towns have little or no control over regulating certain uses. And I alluded earlier to state uses, although that's more a function of sovereign immunity. But for instance, agricultural uses. Section 3 says that you can't prohibit or require a special permit for agricultural uses. And if you want to, you can regulate agricultural uses on parcels of five acres or less, but otherwise, they're permitted anywhere in town. The so-called Dover Amendment part of Chapter 48, Section 3, says that you can't regulate religious or educational uses, so they can go anywhere in town. But you can regulate certain dimensional aspects of them and regulate the parking. But the case law's made clear that even there, the, those controls have to be, there has to be a governmental purpose. There was a case where the town of Belmont tried to limit the height of a Mormon temple that, when you go out of Boston, out on Route 2, it's sort of the peak of Route 2, when you're leaving town and you're left on the, I guess, south side of Route 2, there's a Mormon temple. They tried to regulate the height of the steeple. And I remember the Globe had a graphic that showed like a half dozen iconic New England steeples that were this high, this high, and this high, and the temple steeple was right in with those. Anyway, the SJC said, "No, you can't hold a temple steeple to 35 feet," or whatever it was. So the, you know, whatever the height, actually, they were letting them go a little higher than the height limit, but... So the application of your dimensional controls, even those that are expressly allowed in the State Zoning Act, are limited. You can impose them only pursuant to a reasonable government purpose. And limiting the height on the steeple, tough to find the governmental purpose behind that. So here are the time limits. The public hearing, so some of the other ones, there's a fixed time limit, but here, you have to hold a public hearing within 65 days. And the earlier slide, I wasn't gonna quibble with it at the time, but I will now, referred, the one that talked about constructive grants, said there may be a constructive grant for missing the date on holding a hearing. That's true for comprehensive permits, but it's not true for special permits. So if you miss the 65 days, I say, if I get a panic call saying, "Oh, my goodness, it's been 75 days," I say, "Get that public hearing going." Because then you have 90 days from the close of the hearing to make your decision. So when a town has missed the 65 days, I give them some quick math, and I say, "Well, 65 and 90 is 155. Just make your decision within 155 days or get a written extension, and we'll be okay." But there is nothing in the Zoning Act that says that there's a constructive grant. We've had people argue it, that to claim a constructive grant when the hearing wasn't opened within 65 days, we don't think so. Nonetheless, you wanna open that public hearing within 65 days. Then there's a 90-day period that starts from the close of the hearing. So a lot of these special permit processes, applications, actually, are gonna run several evenings. And so let's say you open the hearing on April 1st, and June 1st, you finally close it. So that's when the 90 days start running, on June 1st, not when it opened. And then again, it can be mutually extended, and the decisions must be filed within 90 days from decision of the vote. Although, the more important date is, the decision has to be filed within the 90 days. Actually, gosh, this should say, filed within the 14 days isn't important. What's important is that it be filed within the 90 days. Now, there's gonna be a slide up here in a little bit talking about zoning board actions that's different. But the wording here is, and you know, the people who wrote these really did us lawyers a huge favor, because each law's different. I mean, and so it's bound to confuse...
The 90 days starts when the town that hearing is open.
No, no, it starts when the hearing is closed. The case law says it's 90 days from the close of the public hearing.
The decision, the decision is made, then you only have 14 days.
Right, but the...
Regardless of the 90 days.
No, it has to be within the 90 days.
Right, but I'm saying, you do it on the 75th day and you make a decision.
Whichever is less.
Well, actually, no, I see. You don't, you don't. The, that's, so one of the phrases we love is directory, not mandatory. So the 14 days is just directory. It's just a direction, it's not mandatory. What's mandatory? Well, but what's more important is that if the decision is made on the 80th day, you do not have 14 days. Now, I want a case that's gonna come up in the zoning board context that I'll talk about in a second, but here, the 90 days, so forget about the 14. I'd say, I mean, you wanna get your decision in within 14 days, but you wanna keep the 90 days up here and don't get confused by the 14 days, because, because the 90 days is the critical date.
You always give a wait for two days.
Yeah. But the statute talks about final action. Here we go. Failure by the special permit granting authority to take final action within said 90 days, and then there's case law that says final action is filing your decision. So even if you acted on day 80, plus 40 would give you up to 94, plus 14, I mean, you don't have till day 94, you have till day 90. So it's a little tricky in that respect. So, is everybody thoroughly confused by that one?
Yeah.
That one's confusing. So in a nutshell...
But Sarri does all that.
When... Forget about them, Sarri. If you have any questions, call me. No, so, well, it is important for the board because, well, actually, in, because you close the public hearing, and then, so you, now, actually, let me ask you this question, because a lot of boards do it differently. I have two different boards here. Do you...
I just realized something.
Uh-oh, do you have to run and file something?
No, 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 it's about the way I do it.
When you're having a public hearing, whether it's subdivision special permit, or a variance or appeal of a building inspector decision, you've got a public hearing, do you close the public hearing and then go into a deliberative session?
Yes.
You do? Okay. So, and most boards do, but not all do. So then you've closed the public hearing, so that's when your 90-day clock starts.
Sometimes we close it, leaving it open, we close it to public comment, leaving it open for some written, you know, there's a specific question.
Okay, yeah.
Is that, when, what does that do to this timetable?
It's called a slippery slope. Well, you've closed it. To this timetable, yeah, no, it's black and white, you've closed it. Right. So your 90 days to make a decision. So you'll, you'll wanna keep an eye on that, for sure. And if, and you'll wanna, you know, get to work writing, well, you know, you start to deliberate and discuss it, but you really wanna get started writing a decision well within the 90 days. You're not at day 87, or not day, but even day 70, and then people are starting to take their winter vacation or their summer vacation. Okay, and so the voting requirements, again, oh, for special permits, we covered that before, unanimous on a three-member board, four of five on a five-member board, and two-thirds of larger.
So here's a question that I struggle with, and we did it, when I was on the Planning Board, we did it differently than the way we do it on the zoning board, which is that the Planning Board would have a discussion, there would be a sort of direction that they were going, there would then be a written draft of the decision prepared, that would be submitted for the board's consideration, and the board would discuss and vote, and might amend.
Yeah, good, it's all good.
The zoning board, we have a, we close the hearing, have our discussion, and then, if we feel that we're ready, we take a vote. And then during, well, we make some suggested findings, discuss some conditions, and vote. But we don't have the detailed written draft in front of us. And then we get the draft for review. Go for it, you know, the chairman signs off, or whoever's gonna sign off. Any thoughts on those two very different ways of doing it? Because the, you know, obviously, in the details of the language, there can be quite a bit of change in the meaning between looking at a written draft voting versus a general discussion, you know, "Let's limit the hours." Okay, you know, and what, how does that actually get written out? Let's limit some, let's put in some, you know, some buffering of some kind, and then how is that actually written?
Yeah, well, they're both fine. I mean, it's two, two models. And, I mean, the latter one has the advantage of the board having had some discussion and made some findings. Maybe implied in the other model was that there was some kind of discussion, but either way, when, if it's, let's call it the Planning Board model, once there's a written decision, then there's something for people to react to and, and make some findings. I'm actually gonna break from this in a minute, actually, and do a little finding exercise. So I think it's really a matter of preference, sounds like it's a bit of a matter of board culture. I don't see that one is better than the other. The key is...
You know, I think a lot of our cases are pretty simple. Someone wants to add a dormer to a non-conforming property, doesn't require a detailed decision for us to read before we can pass on it. So I think the idea, from the board culture point of view, was to not to hold up some of these projects. On the other hand, there are more complex decisions, and for that, I think we did come up with a policy where we could ask the administrator to draft a decision. So the vote would actually be to instruct the administrator to draft the decision, in one way or the other. But we're not necessarily approving it, because we haven't voted the decision.
Right, you didn't make a decision.
Yeah, yeah.
But Sarri always seems a little nervous with that, I think, because you worried that you're gonna be putting words in our mouth.
Well, I was gonna say, she...
Because I've been challenged on that quite a few years ago, which is why I don't give the board members any notes anymore, because I was challenged saying that I'm telling you how to vote, being the zoning administrator. I'm writing this...
Yeah, so I'm just curious as to Joel's response to that, because on the other hand, that's information that we can consider. We have free will.
But you've already discussed.
We have free will, so we can ignore your advice.
Yeah.
Right. But usually, when you instruct me to draft, you give me some findings, so I know where it's going, and you have discussed it in open hearing.
Right.
So I think that's very valid on the controversial ones to do it that way. I'm not nervous about that. I'm nervous about getting everybody to read it before you sit down in an open meeting and approve or deny.
Well, you sent it to us to review.
Right.
I guess the issue is...
Someone has to get that to me somehow.
Well, for the drafts, though, the drafts, it would be, so we always get the decision to review, right? But in some cases, we've already voted the decision. So let's say you're reviewing it, and there's something in there that you don't like. You can't go backwards.
Well, let me, let me move, let me move things along here. I mean, I, I think it's fine. The main thing is, I think, if I were staff, I'd wanna have some direction from the board, so I'm not...
They always give a...
Yeah.
Yeah, that we do.
All right, let's take a little break here. So this is off the, the fourth bullet made a dozen of these.
Well, sure, the associates will show.
Second class, too.
Yeah, that's how I ran into that issue. It's bad.
Yeah, we have. Okay, so it is a requirement, it's, I'm good. Let me find my copies. Okay, let's try to move through this, 'cause, I mean, I'm happy to stay longer, as I said, I'm just concerned that you all might get a little antsy at some point. So the most important thing to take away from this entire evening is that you make So one of my least favorite moments in a, when I'm asked to attend one of these, is when the proceedings seem to be over, and one of the members says, "I move that we close the public hearing and that we deny the application." And I'm thinking, "Really? I mean, based on what?" You know? So the point being, you close the public hearing, then you have discussion, during that discussion, you make findings. And so making factual findings. So sometimes people, when they join a board, they think, "Gee, I don't have any training for this, you know, I'm not a lawyer, I'm not a planner," whatever. And I say, "Doesn't matter." You know, I actually find that scientists are the best at this, and I gather at least some of you are scientists, because it's about factual inquiry. Are you the scientist? Factual inquiry and making findings. And so the dormer, all right, so the question is, to whom is the dormer gonna be visible? Or whose view is gonna, particularly here, where you got coastal, is that dormer gonna block somebody's view of some water and that sort of thing? You're only going to determine that by, number one, going to the site and then discussing it and making a factual finding. And the neighbor's gonna show up and say, "You can't let him put up that dormer, it's gonna block my entire view." And the abutter might invite you up to their second floor, and you go up there, and you say, "What, what, what's she talking about?" You know, I mean, you could put a 40-foot dormer up there and you wouldn't obstruct the view. Anyway, so, let's go through this quickly. So here's the example, just if you would read that first paragraph, this is the fact All right, so somebody's looking for a minor front yard setback. The board decides to grant the variance. So this first example here, the following findings describing examples A through C would be insufficient to support the board's decision. So I won't bore you with reading A. All A does is it recites the statutory criteria. Excuse me. So this is what, you know, we call conclusory language. It's just concluding that, that owing to the unusual shape of the lot and so forth. There's nothing to support it, and this is literally repeating the statutory language that, the findings that are required by statute. So, and that, in the brackets, says this set of findings defective, because it merely restates the statute requirements. So B, they call them out in numbered paragraphs. "The lot has a unique shape, unlike that of other lots in the same zoning district." Well, that latter part is a start anyway, but again, it's largely just without, it doesn't supply any facts, it's just putting in language that supports what the statute wants to see. The literal application of the bylaw would create a financial hardship for the applicant. Again, pure conclusion, it's just repeating statutory language. No one in the neighborhood who would be affected, there's no one to be affected. Well, it's just, again, a conclusion and so forth. It's minimal and wouldn't irrigate from the intent of the bylaw. Doesn't tell you how it's minimal, you have to draw your own conclusions. So C is a little better, but all it does is it records, and so this is a common fault. It repeats the statements that people made at the public hearing, so you can't find any hearings in here by the board. So the petitioner stated that the lot's triangular, and he stated that it's so on and so forth, and no one was in opposition. Member Black stated that he thought the addition would be attractive and so forth, but it, none of these are findings by the board. So let's go to D. So the board determined the following. "The triangular shape of the petitioner's lot is an unusual one in the R1 district in which it's located." All right, so first of all, we're told that it's tri- All right, so first of all, we're told that it's triangular shape. Now granted, yes, it's in his application, but so far, the board hasn't found that. I mean, he may have said it was triangular, but you gotta find that. Number two, we're being told it's in the R1 district. And number three, it's unusual in the district. So that's a finding, and that's a good one. Two, proposed addition, "is the smallest practical size to accommodate the petitioner's need." Now, the petitioner said that, but now the board is finding that. They've actually questioned, they looked at the site, and they said, "Yep, that's the smallest addition that, that will do what the petitioner needs it to do." Three, "The only place on the lot where an addition could be constructed, which would not encroach on the required yards, would be at the rear of the house where the septic system is now located." Now, we were told that in the fact pattern at the beginning, but the board is accepting it, and they're stating that as a fact. Four, "The estimated cost of relocating the septic system in order to construct the addition to the rear of the house would approximately be $12,000." And today, of course, that's a sneeze, but, you know, maybe when this was written, well, I'm exaggerating, but, the point is, you know, we've got a number here. Today, the number might have to be a little higher to impress people, but it's a real number, and it has some bearing on the overall project. Five, "In the proposed location, the addition would encroach only two feet into the required 40-foot front yard setback and extends only 12 feet across the front of the house." So you can tell right from the application, he was only looking for a two, two-foot setback, but they've added the fact that it extends only 12 feet across. Again, probably obvious from reading the plans, but now it's been a factual finding, put in the decision. And then, six, "The uncovered front steps at the house already extend six feet into the front yard, and the addition would not project beyond the steps." So somebody was alert and noticed that, you know, thereby, kinda mitigating the impact, if you will, of the setback. So then, so those are six factual findings. Nobody's said anything yet about granting a variance. They made six factual findings. Then they say, "On the basis of these factors, the board has determined that owing to the unique triangular shape of the lot, in combination with the location of the existing dwelling and the septic system." So anyway, you get the idea. They've made factual findings, then they plug the findings into the, into the statutory criteria. So that's really what the decision-making is all about. I mean, putting it back into context, so whichever method you use, the important thing is whether you make the findings first and give it to staff to make a decision, or the board has a discussion, makes some findings, and a member drafts a decision, or somebody comes up with a draft, and that person, the one person who was asked to draft it, comes up with some findings, and then the board discusses them and agrees or disagrees or amends them. But, I mean, basically, if a decision is challenged and it's got no factual findings, we're shot. We, the lawyers who have to defend it, are done.
So the one thing I suspect that we could do better is I think we tend to make the motion yea or nay, then develop the findings. We probably should develop the findings in, more explicitly, in the course of discussion. I guess I'd be interested in the board's view on that.
Well, I'll give you my view-
Before saying yea or nay.
We actually make a motion-
You do a, you do a motion, and then you do the findings, and then you all agree on the pass.
Right, but there is a motion that is yea or nay, that-
Right, somebody makes a motion to approve it or deny it.
Might be better to say, "What can we, what are our findings with respect to this?" And then say, "Okay, based on those findings, we tend towards denial," or "We tend towards..."
I would much prefer that you make the findings first.
I mean, I, we, we did recent, you know, within the last couple of years, say, "Okay, we should have our findings before we have our conditions." That at least, yeah.
Yeah. Anyway, so I think you get the point there. So the findings really are, are key. They're, they're really critical. Okay, moving on. So, variances, here are the criteria. You've got them in your bylaw, I'm sure. Use variances are not allowed unless expressly permitted by your bylaw. Actually, I looked at the bylaw, you've got interesting language. You don't allow them, but you expressly state that use variances that formerly granted, I guess in a time when they were permitted, are still valid, and you, somebody can come in and modify them, which is an interesting provision. So here, the ZBA must act within 100 days of filing the application. A decision must be filed within 14 days after the 100 days. So, that's the case that I want, although it was on an appeal of a building inspector's decision. But I got a call from a, a ZBA chairman who said, it was the 96th day, and she said, "Oh my God, I just noticed." And she was a lawyer to boot. She said, "I just noticed, the 96th day, we're not meeting again for three days," whatever I said. But they had voted. They voted to deny. And I said, "That's fine, that's fine." I said, "Schedule a hearing as quickly as you can, write a decision, and get it in within the 14 days of, of when you actually write the decision," which they did. It was challenged, and it went up to the appeals court, and the appeals court upheld that. So this is different from the special permit, where you have to file, to take final action within the 90 days. Here, you can bleed over past the 100 days.
Two days.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember if-
Any guidance on substantial?
I'm sorry, what?
So bullet point two, substantial hardship. That is always, you know, what's, what's the legal guidance on substantial?
Well, the, there is definitely room for a board to exercise discretion there, where there's no room to exercise discretion. So the variance standards are almost unmeatable, and it's the first bullet that's the killer.
Right.
Related to soil conditions, shape or topography of the land or structures would involve a substantial hardship without the variances and cannot affect the district generally. So in other words, if you say it's ledge, well, so what? Your whole district is ledge. Or if you say it's particularly porous soil or particularly clay-like soil, so what? So is your whole district. I mean, generally, it's unusual to find a lot that's geologically unique, and the circum-
Well, we have glacial erratics, so every now and then, you get a giant boulder on somebody's yacht. A lot.
Yeah. So, well, so that, that could, so that would be, that would be a, a good factual basis.
And of course, you could remove it, but it's costly.
Well, okay, yeah, so if it's a boulder half the size of this room, then I think I personally'd be comfortable, whatever that number is, well, I don't know what that number is, but if it's a, you know, well into the five figures, then say, "Well, yeah, that's unreasonable." I mean, it really depends, you know, I mean, you have people building $3 million houses, so $50,000 to remove a boulder, you know, so it's, but anyway, that, the substantial, you do have, there is room there for board discretion. And so, who am I to say? You know, you're gonna know the local conditions. But it's, it's the first bullet that is the toughest. And there are, there are no cases that overturn, appellate cases that overturn the denial of a variance. There might be one, actually, the denial of a variance. And there are a small few that uphold the grant of a variance. But if, once a zoning board's denied it, it's rare. And it's even hard, if it's granted, it's very tough and challenged by a neighbor, it's tough for the person who got the variance to get it upheld by the courts, because that first bullet is such a tough standard. So, covered that. Covered some permits. So when was the last time you had one?
Last year.
Oh, yeah. Was it a large one?
No, it was, um, four units.
Oh, okay.
Right here.
Um, anyway.
Two last year.
Saint Mark's, right?
Saint Mark's, yeah, for three dwellings of the, right here in front of us.
I'd say we're kinda friendly.
Yeah, on that scale, it's not a problem. Not 240. 240, whatever. So anyway, there, you do have to open that public hearing within 30 days. That's, that's constructive grant requirement.
Unless you did.
An extension, yeah. And act within 40 days to close, and it's just a simple majority.
And now we're under 1280 days.
Yeah.
Under the new regulations.
The new regulations are, are very tough.
180 days total.
Unless you get an extension.
So, now the record, pulling it all together. So has the board made findings? Is there substantial evidence in the record to support the board's findings? That's really what we were talking about. Last bullet, "Findings in the record protect the board from legal challenges and explain the board's decision, even unpopular ones." All right, I'd like to talk about this one case. Here's another way. So this is a liquor licensing case, but the standard is the same. It's arbitrary and capricious. So the city council in Woburn denied this applicant's request for a liquor license on the grounds that they had sort of very generalized standards, but they said basically that they already had too many in that part of town. This guy took great pains to say that, and that's some generalized language about impacts on the community, took great pains to say, so Woburn is at the crossword, crossroads, crossroad of Route 120, Route 93 coming north out of Boston, and 128, you know, going east-west. So, and it's a lot of office parks and so forth there. So this guy comes in with a business plan, saying, "We're gonna deliver to these people working in corporate offices, and we estimate that 5% of our business is gonna be walk-ins and drive-ins." So traffic wasn't even an issue. They had a back and forth with the zoning board, they had to appeal a denial, went back to the zoning board, they came up with a, an agreement with the zoning board, and their zoning decision expressly cast these conditions in stone. Nonetheless, they were denied. So it gets to the appeals court, and the appeals court battered them black and blue with the Board of Aldermen, saying that, so they say, "We can dispense at once with one of the three grounds the commission proffered." Oh, it was the, the city council acting as the licensing commission in its denial. "A fear that Donovan might transfer any license he was issued to someone who could use it as a full package store." Oh, he was just looking for beer and wine. And they said, "Well, there's a statutory requirement that if they wanna change the license, they gotta come back before you can do it anyway." And the court actually used a great quote from a zoning case. "A board may not deny a permit simply by conjuring a parade of horribles, particularly when it has the power to prevent them." And that was Britton versus the Zoning Board of Appeals of Gloucester. So, don't you zoning boards go parading horribles. Then the second reason, well, the main one was a belief that Woburn's already saturated with liquor, or at least with liquor stores. And the court says, and that therefore, there was no need for another. Of course, the, this is the court now, "Of course, the genuineness of that concern is substantially undercut by the commission's allowance of dramatic increases in the retail space of two existing stores while Donovan's applications were pending." So, that hurt them. But the real problem with the commission's saturation rationale stems from its failure to engage in a particularized analysis of the business that Donovan was actually seeking to run and the location where he was seeking to run it. You know, and that's what we did with that exercise. A particularized analysis of, in this case, the business that this guy Donovan was looking to operate. And that's, you know, what you need to do. And so, moreover, it says later, "In making its decision regarding the need for Donovan's store, the commission simply looked at the total number of stores in Woburn and the surrounding towns. Proper assessment of need for another liquor store, however, requires a more particularized inquiry. The test for the need includes an assessment of the public want and the appropriateness of a liquor license at a particular location." And then they have a short paragraph here. "The record reveals that regardless of the total number of stores in Woburn, no other store is located within two and a half miles of this location. Donovan chose that location because of office parks nearby, provide a customer base for corporate gifts on which he chiefly will concentrate, and he conducted surveys of the businesses and so forth. None of those factors are reflected in the board's decision." So, I mean, that's a case of a decision-making board being essentially torn apart by a court for not engaging in a particularized analysis of the relevant factors.
But this is not a zoning case. This was a liquor license.
Right, but the standard is the same. Arbitrary, was their decision arbitrary and capricious? And so, what was-
Because we would, on zoning, we would never argue for the viability of the business one way or the other. That's the business owner's risk, right?
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, no, I'm just saying, by way of analogy, those were the factors. You know, so for instance, you might deny an eight-room, eight-unit clustered special permit based on, say, some density concerns or whatever, without looking at, or design, well, design, what, it actually could be aesthetics, without looking at the, and analyzing and making factual findings as to what's around that, you know, what's the context, and what are the key facts? Yeah, no, I'm not suggesting the, that those particular factors, although maybe you're referring to the fact that the ZBA got into it with them, but the, I mean, what's instructive from that is that the court had no problem pulling out relevant facts that would have been germane to making the determination, and the licensing board didn't look at any of those. They just went straight to generalized issues. So, then in putting together the record, the application, correspondence, written comments from members of the public, or evidence at the hearing, plans, drawings, photographs, deed surveys, written testimony, public hearing notes, so this is, this is really more of a staff function, but you wanna have it all together. And so, we went through the findings exercise earlier, but must be supported by facts, must relate the facts to the conditions, must be proved, or the standards that must be met. So, this is kind of a generalized point, the criticisms of conventional zoning, separation of land uses, focus on lot sizes and setbacks. I mean, frankly, you know, those are criticisms of conventional zoning, but I'm not sure that, you know, we're necessarily following these principles. I mean, yes, we're separating land uses, but we're not exclusively, I hope, wedded to these kinds of considerations anymore. I mean, I think we're sensitive to not only promoting low-density auto-dependence suburban sprawl, for instance. But in any event, certainly you wanna avoid just that. So, these are other tools and techniques. I noticed you have quite a few in the zoning bylaw, and the latter bunch of chapters have a bunch of these. The town of Amherst has been trying to get a town meeting to vote some form-based zoning, which is really pretty interesting. I think there's some areas in Lowell that have it, but it's, the town meeting, which is, it's a representative town meeting, and the people in town meeting are pretty zoning-savvy, but they're still kinda struggling with it, but it's a very interesting concept.
What, can you describe that?
Ah, you know, I was afraid you were gonna ask. I, I run line meetings in the office a couple times a month, and I, I don't have a good way of describing it just yet, but it's, it, rather than look exclusively at dimensional criteria, 30 feet in height, five-foot setbacks, whatever, you look at the form of what exists there, and then you have criteria to follow that form, or you establish in areas, for instance, there's one part where they'd like to create more of a village, where there's actually a 150-year-old, there are remnants of an older village, and have more like that, but there isn't enough form to follow, so you create kind of models that people should work with. So, it, it's not just dimensions, it's actual blocks, if you will. And also, well, it's the heights, it's the bulk, it's, um-
Floor area.
So the heights, where is it? Little area over here, where all the small lots, smaller homes that are now being added on to-
So we do for, I mean, we have criteria where alterations, you know, shouldn't be too different than what's already there.
Yeah.
And, and based on bulk or floor area.
Yeah. Yeah. This is dealing with non-conforming structures?
Right.
Yeah, yeah. Actually, on that, I have one last head up. This is just a keeper, but it's more zoning board stuff, but- board stuff, but there was this...
This volumetric zoning kind of go with form.
The zoning board deals with, but that Gale case, I think I forgot the slide. Well, so it was actually a seasonal structure in Gloucester. Anyway, in a nutshell, Gloucester had, the Gloucester zoning board had granted a Section Six finding, a substantially more detrimental finding for non-conforming structure, and a variance, and, I'm sorry, it won't be quite enough for the planning board. And, so the court, to everybody's surprise, said, "You didn't need a variance to exceed..." Well, I shouldn't say everybody, there were two views on this, but in Gale, the court said that even though they'd gotten a variance, remember, the zoning board had granted a variance, a neighbor who was actually a cousin, who has two properties on Grandma's lot, and, you know, whoever got stuck with the little house wanted to build a big house, and so the cousin brought suit against cousin. Anyway, challenging the variance that they got, which as I said earlier, is difficult to, always difficult to defend the variance because of that standard. And the court said, "Well, you don't need the variance anyway, because the Section Six finding, the finding that is not substantially more detrimental, is sufficient to bless an increase in non-conforming nature. So if there had been a side yard setback violation of two feet, and they went out six feet, that could be permitted by a Section Six finding, and they wouldn't need a variance." And that was always open to question. Or if they were, let's say the height limit is twenty-eight feet, and they were at thirty, and they were going to thirty-three, that could be permitted by the Section Six finding. What was left unclear by the decision in Gale, because the court in Gale didn't give us enough facts, what was left unclear is if a new nonconformity would be permitted by the Section Six finding, and the Dedrick case, which Cape Town is, I've forgotten now, is it Turo, no, it's somewhere in the...
Orleans.
Orleans, yeah. In the Dedrick case, the court said that a new nonconformity, so in Dedrick, the house was conforming as to height, and they wanted to introduce a height violation, if you will. And the court said, "No, the Section Six finding is not sufficient to bless a new zoning nonconformity." So I don't know if that's an issue that your board has grappled with, but it's left in.
But it's, I'm curious about, like you have, we have a ten-foot side yard setback, so a house comes to us and it's nine feet. They want to do an addition to make it seven feet.
Yeah.
You're saying that that's not a variance?
Not me, I never said, I was on the other side, but Gale, I mean, I wasn't on the other side.
Now, I understand, I understand you can extend that structure as long as it doesn't come any closer than nine feet.
Right.
But for it to encroach another two feet, it's a variance.
Well, and I'd say, you're articulating the majority view, and I was with you, but Gale says, "No." Gale says that that can be permitted by a Section Six finding. Now, the Section Six finding, the standard is what? Is that it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. So you might find that at nine feet, you know, we had to live with it, but going two feet closer is substantially more detrimental, so you can deny the Section Six finding. But if you grant it, if the lot next door is so huge, or it's very big, and the house is some distance away, and no matter how much they might look to expand that neighboring house one day, the additional two feet here won't make a difference, and it'll mean a lot to the people who are asking the additional two feet, you know, if the board finds all of that, makes the appropriate factual findings, you know, then you might approve it. And the Gale case says that you can do that with a Section Six finding.
Joel, it's my understanding that any property rendered non-conforming is the result of a zoning change. In other words, it's been harmed by a zoning change at some point in its life, is always, in Dartmouth, and I'm not an authority on the Thalmud bylaws, but that's always eligible for a special permit, because it's been rendered non-conforming as a result of a zoning change, which speaks to what Gale is talking about. So, I think so anyway, would you agree?
Oh, for sure. I mean, any property...
But you're saying this is a variance, because you're extending...
No, I'm saying that if they have come to me, they've got a nine-foot setback, the town only allows a ten-foot, they wanted to go seven feet. If they came in with an application, I would tell them, "You have a right to go for a special permit," but I would recommend a variance, which they wouldn't get, probably.
I see.
See what I'm saying?
Because it's a more stringent, tougher bar, the variance.
Much tougher. And as I was saying earlier, even if you were to grant it, if an aggrieved neighbor challenged it, the neighbor would probably win and get it overturned, which is exactly what happened in Gale, and the court said, "Didn't need the variance anyway."
Right.
But what I'm saying to Suri is the additional two foot of setback violation, the Gale case says you can permit with, again, it's a special permit, Section Six finding, you can give them the special permit, and that would make it...
So it's not more detrimental?
If you make the finding, you'd have to make the finding, it's not substantially more detrimental, yeah.
Right.
Yeah. But, as I said, after reading the Gale case, we thought, "Well, not only is it doing that, but it seems to be allowing new nonconformities," and the Dedrick case said, "No, we didn't mean that." Thank goodness.
And it is a...
Oh, jeez, we haven't, all right, I better get going here and planning stuff. So, these are the principles of planning. Has the planning board updated the master plan in recent years?
We were working on it.
Oh, you're working on it?
Once a week.
Okay, so, what you probably know is then that the planning board is responsible for doing it, and it only requires planning board approval. Some planning boards choose to bring it to downtown, to town meeting.
I was asked to go.
He has to go, or true?
The goal was the policies.
Okay.
No, it has to be approved by town meeting.
Okay. So that's your own objective by law, and, you know, more and more planning boards are doing that anyway, bringing it to town meeting to get buy-in from the whole town. And so these are the kinds of elements, as they call it here, that would be in a master And here's the role of the planning board, and the Board of Appeals has a role just to be represented, involved in the master plan committee. Comprehensive plan, I realize we haven't...
Can you go back to what you just said?
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. Which?
That the zoning board has a role...
Yeah.
Committee.
Representative on the, do you have a master plan committee?
Yes.
It's a local comprehensive plan.
Yeah.
And we decided, instead of having two titles to it, it was all consolidated.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Master plan consolidated under local comprehensive plan. And the planning board has been given by the board a selectman the responsibility for creating and updating a local comprehensive plan. So the way we do that, we have a subcommittee of three, that then we get buy-in from the planning board and the selectman, and it takes it, then we go to town meeting for their vote only. Their vote only has to be on the goals and policies. The action items are separate, they can be changed out at any time.
But no one from the ZBA sits in that committee?
Correct.
Because it's delegated to the planning board.
Same, they're appointed by the selectmen, so the selectman can tell us to do it, is that the logic?
No, it's your guys' policy, under what the selectman granted you, reminded you, and they have a subcommittee of three members of the planning board. It's not done that way.
But there's nothing precluding that if...
So this isn't a requirement, it's a direction?
I guess so, I'm looking to see if it's in the statute, I don't know that it is.
It's right there, it's a question you need to answer.
Yeah.
But I'm just explaining that it's a part of the statute.
I understand why we do it, I'm just wondering, are we required to do what it says there?
It's not in the statute.
So it's not required?
Yeah.
Okay.
You guys are off the hook.
Yeah, I'm all set, sorry.
You're welcome to come, though, it's a good meeting.
Wednesday's at three.
Wednesday's at three.
Well, you know, from time to time, we've had, we've had joint discussions between planning and zoning, which I think are useful, and probably we ought to do more.
This is more of the planning process, I realize that we're almost at eight-thirty, and I've dealt with subdivision control, so here's, just, once you have your plan, the follow-up. So here's subdivision control, so this is a general statement of purpose, you know, general planning principles, if you will, particularly having to do with the regulating and laying out construction of ways and subdivisions and providing access to lots and so forth. So, and this is some history of subdivision control, that most important is nineteen-fifty-three is our current subdivision control law, really does literally date to nineteen-fifty-three, and it hasn't been amended very much since then, actually. So a subdivision, by definition, is a division of attractive landed in two or more lots, and then these are the exceptions. So, these exceptions here is, gives rise to somebody applying for an A and R, an approval not required plan. In other words, approval under the subdivision control law is not required if you're making a subdivision, but all of the lots have frontage on a public way, or a way shown on an approved subdivision plan, or a way in existence before the subdivision control law came into effect, and having, in the opinion of the planning board, sufficient with suitable grades. The statute actually says town clerk, but that's, the, so, now, this first bullet is really important. The role of the planning board under subdivision control is to adopt subdivision rules and regulations. So most planning boards have standard subdivision rules and regulations that are based on models that have been around for decades. But what's unique about subdivision control is that planning boards have the ability to empower themselves by putting in stronger language in their subdivision rules and regulations. So for instance, gosh, that just escaped me, there are subdivision regulations that talk about impacts outside of the subdivision, that put greater emphasis on requiring, for instance, well, today, a lot of this is covered by stormwater control, but requiring that all drainage is maintained on-site, and, you know, having higher technical standards than the traditional sets of subdivision rules and regulations have, and particularly concerning traffic impacts outside of the subdivision. Actually, there's a famous old Thalmud case, oh, gosh, it was on Sam Turner Road, what would have been a subdivision, it was proposed, it's at least forty years old, it's terrible.
Was it a subdivision?
No, it was a subdivision plan that was denied, and it was denied based on traffic impacts outside of the subdivision, and the court looked at your subdivision regs and said there was language in those regulations that said you could look at the traffic impacts outside of the subdivision, which most subdivision regulations back then didn't do, so they upheld the denial of it.
Sam Turner?
Well, Sam Turner Road was where the traffic impacts would have gone. I'm trying to think of the name of the plaintiff, anyway.
Cobham Palmview's pretty old, that, that's the other side of the street, but it's a pretty big subdivision, it was a while ago.
I'm going to say seventies.
It has been for a while.
Seventies, nearly eighties. But it was denied, so maybe that particular...
It didn't get built.
Something else would have. Anyway, so I just make that point, then you determine whether a plan is an A and R, is entitled to endorsement, approves, review preliminary and definitive subdivision plans, hold hearings, hold performance guarantees, release lots, and so forth, that's through the subdivision process, then you advise the ZBA on comprehensive permits that are So, different types of subdivisions, you get preliminary plans, definitive plans, A and R plans, so these are the kinds of issues, of course. By the way, when's the last time you had a real subdivision?
Couple weeks ago.
No, how big?
Nine lots.
Yeah, nine lots.
Yeah?
And before that?
I don't know.
That's a lot.
Yeah, well, that's interesting, though, that, you're making my point, yeah. Things were dry, but obviously it's...
Well, there's also approaching building, I think.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's not that much land, huh?
It's a race with the three of them.
So...
Joel, I have a quick question for you.
Yeah.
If someone advances a matter under eighty-one L, and, you know, more than one house existing on a lot prior to the subdivision control law, and they meet the requirements of eighty-one L, would you then require, would you believe, do you believe that it also requires variances?
We just won that case at the SJC, now, two months ago. Palitz, P-A-L-I-T-Z.
Required them.
Versus Tisbury.
Required variance.
Yes, yeah, that was an unex...
Was it a deal score?
Uh, SJC.
It was.
Yeah.
Just curious, I don't have K and P, so I don't get these notices, but...
You're underprivileged, what can I say?
Are you talking the same thing as the Brannigan case?
Bransford?
Brannigan here.
I don't know Brannigan.
The nonconforming that was subdivided into three, because there was three houses on one lot?
Could be.
Except under an A and R.
Yeah, that would be...
Really not protected anymore?
Yes, exactly, yeah, and that was an unanswered question, and we just won that case within the last two, three months.
Yours went all the way at the SJC.
Yeah, P-A-L-I-T-Z, actually, yeah.
And that's a court of record that has to be...
Yeah, it's the highest court in the state, yes, pre-triberal court, yeah, yeah, and it was great victory, because it's been an unanswered question for a long time, yeah.
Should have come down?
So preliminary plans are just, you know, to get the conversation going, it's not appealable, and it's useful to have a back-and-forth, and then they come in with the definitive plan, you can approve it, modify and approve it, or deny the plan, require performance guarantee. So the approval of a subdivision occurs in two stages, two steps, the first one is you vote your approval one night, write a decision at the board, and that actually gets filed, but then sometime after you've approved the plan, they come back in to get you to actually sign and endorse the plan, and in that interim period, they have to present you with performance guarantee sufficient to cover the infrastructure improvements they're going to make, and you won't sign the plan, given them their final approval, until they give you satisfactory performance guarantee. When I referred to that McGelder case earlier, that's the part of the statute that says a majority of the members of the board have to sign the plan, it's just I don't see anywhere else in the statute where it says requires a majority, but anyway, I lost that, so. But anyway, the definitive plan then, that plan that's been inked by the planning board is what gets recorded at the registry. It has to be recorded within six months from the date of your endorsement, otherwise you have to come back and just get your assent that nothing's changed. And here are the timelines, the preliminary plan, it's just a forty-five-day review, definitive plan, the, oh, so the board of health role is critical here, it has to be submitted to the board of health, and they have forty-five days to respond, and if the board of health says to deny the plan, it's denied, the planning board must deny. I think that's pretty interesting, I don't know of any other area of land use law where another board tells the primary board, "Deny the plan." And then there are different timelines, whether the plan is non-residential or residential for approval, the approval deadline, and these are the forms of guarantee, and the most important thing is the last bullet, the applicant has the right to select the type of guarantee. A lot of boards like number two, the deposit of, you know, cash, passbook, basically, and back in the heyday, you used to get them, but now, you know, they're not even now, but I haven't seen that in a long time. So typically, the applicants like number three or four, I mean, the third or fourth, excuse me, bullet. I've always been fascinated by this one, that you get ignominious securities, I mean, the law is so conservative, so the idea that you might get, you know, something...
Stocks?
Stocks, that could...
Could go down, could go up?
Yeah.
Could make money on those.
Yeah, right.
Maybe.
But it could go down.
Maybe, right.
Whoops, what happened to my Facebook stock?
Apple shares.
Yeah, exactly. Approval not required plan, so they have to meet the frontage requirement that's in the bylaw, they have to, each lot has to have vital access from those ways, as I mentioned earlier, a public way, or a way shown on a plan, or a way in existence. a public way or a way shown on a plan or a way in existence. So A and R plan, no public hearing, 21 days. Phew, it's really tough. Constructive approval after 21 days. And you can't rescind an endorsement of an A and R plan, so it's done. No ZBA role in subdivision control, you're off the hook. Other items, I don't know if there are any other items. Nice slide. Oh, other permits and approvals. So, yeah, I mean, these are other areas that are quite relevant to land use. I mean, obviously licenses, particularly food, alcohol, fuel storage licenses, conservation commission wetlands, Title V Board of Health, historical commission certificates of appropriateness, state NEPA 21E, highway access permits can be quite significant. Federal, mainly we see NEPA and the telecommunications act, of course. And fees. Do you have a 4450 3G regulation consultant review fees? That's important. Here's practical advice. This, actually, I find a pretty useful slide. Be on time. Read the packet before the meeting. I won't ask for a show of hands. This one town administrator was telling me, says, "Well, I have five selectmen, and one guy who gets his packet, they meet Monday night, one guy gets his package Friday morning, and he's calling me midday Friday with questions. And the other end of the spectrum, I have three selectmen who are opening their packets as they're sitting down in the selectmen's meeting Monday night." So good to read about that. Staff assistance, know your comprehensive plan and...
Town meeting.
Town meeting, how to read. Be familiar with the sites and the projects, share information. Focus on facts, not opinions. That's actually, you know, back to, the question earlier was more about decorum at public hearings. But, you know, public hearings, you get a lot of opinions, and your job is to pull out the facts from the opinions. That one's quite important, actually. Be a problem solver, not a problem maker. I'm sure that doesn't apply to anybody here. Be probing, but not argumentative. That's actually a good one, too, because it's good to ask questions. You know, there's nothing wrong with asking questions, but you don't want to argue with the applicant. You know, the applicant says whatever, you don't say, "No, it's not." You say, so, you know, ask them questions if you don't agree. But don't argue, just ask questions. Participate in discussion, be practical, respect your associates, treat everyone equally. Maybe not in Falmouth, but just about every town I've been in has a pain in the neck applicant or person. So you even gotta treat that person equally. No names. Summarize what you've heard. Be conscious of body language. You know, you hate the person who's sort of sitting there going, you know, just so, obviously. So anyway, I find this really a very...
The question on share information.
Yes.
We're told not to even share, that everything's supposed to go through the planner then to us, and no cross-sharing of information at all.
Yeah, you know, I'm glad you said that. So that's intended to mean at the public hearing.
At the public hearing, okay.
Yeah, just, you know, no reply to all on emails or anything like that.
Okay, that, I was, I got it.
Thank you. Absolutely. Yeah. But, so for instance, if there is a site that you're particularly familiar with, well, because you live there for, not live there, if you live there, you're not participating, but you've driven through that intersection your whole life, or you're familiar with the site for whatever reason, you've got some personalized knowledge about it.
You want to share that.
I mean, number one, you want to share it because you want your fellow board members to have the benefit of it. Number two, you don't want in some later day to say, "Oh, well," and, you know, come out with a reason for denial that's really not part of the...
It's publicly share information is the way.
Publicly shared information.
But they can share with me, and I can share with the board.
Well...
They're not sharing. So it's not just, you're not sharing it with the board previously.
Not privately.
Give it to me, and I can disseminate.
Yeah.
This has come up on occasion where, I mean, first of all, we have a couple of attorneys, you know, as you noted, I'm a scientist. Sometimes we have personal knowledge, either a statute or a particular location. I had a case once where a guy was saying, "This is freshwater. We don't need to worry about nitrogen inputs." And I know it's saltwater.
Well, there you go.
I was admonished from, you know, because I'm a board member, for saying, "I don't believe this is a freshwater system." The more, I guess from then, I took away that the way to get that evidence was to say to the applicant, "What is the salinity in that system?" Or, you know, "Please make a determination as to the salinity of that system." Not use my personal knowledge.
I guess I don't agree with that advice. I mean, I would say, based, I mean, whatever your basis for knowing it is, just say, "Based on my professional experience and my field of knowledge, I have reason to believe that actually that is a saltwater body. And, you know, could you address it if not tonight, next time?"
Yeah.
I mean, no, it's a fact, you know, that you have. Maybe you're wrong, but probably it sounds like you knew it from facts.
Definitely.
Yeah.
And I guess we have people with expertise in engineering and construction that might chime in and so forth. So those are valid inputs.
They are valid inputs, but, I mean, you're giving a very particular point. I mean, you factually knew that it was green, not red. So, yeah, I wouldn't hold that back. Yeah. I mean, that kind of thing, that, something that specific is not gonna come up that often.
No.
Yeah, I would absolutely get it out there. Yeah. I mean, I'd let them present and all that.
Even though it's not derived from the testimony of either the applicant or the opponent or the public, it's coming from the board itself.
That's fine, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, courts defer to the decisions of boards. I mean, you see this phrase that crops up all the time, "Because of your familiarity with local conditions." So that's a very specific familiarity with a specific local condition. And I would absolutely, again, I mean, you know, it's quite some doing it appropriately, but, yeah, absolutely. And say, I, you know, "I know that that's a saltwater body, and I'd like you, if you can't address it tonight, to look further and do it, and come back next time to address it." Yeah. Yes.
We recently had a couple of decisions where we denied the applicant, and we were sued individually.
Who?
And the case itself referred to whimsical, arbitrary, and capricious. Now, I don't know if that's a template that all the attorneys use when they file against municipalities, but arbitrary, I can see, but whimsical? I mean, nobody was laughing when the decision was made, so how do they come up with terms like that? And, you know, personally, I find that offensive, but I don't know why they do that.
Yeah, well, arbitrary and capricious are statutory. Whimsical, people throw in, it's gratuitous, in my opinion. It's gratuitous.
Just to be funny.
What's that?
They do it, they throw it in just to be funny.
Just to be funny? But we didn't laugh.
That wasn't funny.
Let me say this. You probably were not named personally. So the statute requires that individual board members be named.
Well, that's true.
So you're all named individually, and then it probably says, "As they are members of the Planning Board of Falmouth." Now, on rare occasions, it says, "And personally." Then you're named. But whether it's the zoning board or the planning board, both statutes require that you name the members individually. But you'll see, it should have the phrase...
It all got noticed.
Yeah, because they have to.
They have to.
The statute requires it, but it'll say, comma, "Members of the planning board," as they, it should say, "As they are members," or it might say, "Members of the planning board." And then if you read the complaint, it'll, when it gets to the parties, it'll say, "So-and-so's a member of the planning board, lives at such an address." But unless they specifically state, "Named individually," you're not named individually or personally.
And what are the protections that board members enjoy from such lawsuits as board members?
Well, there are two statutes that the town can accept to make, one of them mandate requires that the town indemnify you personally. Chapter 26813, I'm gonna say. But, so you can check to see if the town has adopted it. Even if not, I have yet to see a town, even when somebody should have been hung out to dry, I haven't seen a town that has hung out any member to dry. I mean, otherwise, who's gonna sit on board?
Right.
I mean, I, because I have seen instances where a member, a single member, has just been, it's been personal, he shouldn't have participated, and that sort of thing, and was called out for it. And even then, towns will defend. And usually, we work that out pretty quickly, get that person, get the case remanded and have it heard again without that person. Making it clear that if he does it again, we ain't gonna defend him. Some conversation like that happens. But, yeah, it's usually not personal. I think we are pretty well done. Yeah, so these are just sources of information, support, and here are some websites. So the Citizen Planner Training Collaborative. So I'm here tonight on demand, if you will, and by the way, it's, we don't charge, our firm doesn't charge anyway, we're happy to do trainings gratuitously. Gratuitously, is that how I meant to put it? But CTPC or CPTC also has trainings, regional ones, and then there's a big annual conference in the middle of March held usually at Holy Cross College. But then there are regional trainings on some of these other, some other modules. So I think we are done.
Can I ask one other question?
Sure.
That's always troubled me, is the public versus private ways in subdivisions.
Yeah.
Is there any guidance that is entirely up to the developer?
Well, you know, driving down here, I had three different conversations. One was actually about a zoning board making a decision and going through their decision-making process for a pretty controversial project. But another one was from a planning board member in a town where they've got a bunch of old subdivision roads, and they're finally having mercy on the people who live, like, you know, 20, 30, 40-year-old subdivisions, and talking about making them public ways. And the issue is the legal status of the roads. So, planning board, when, so now I'm talking prospectively, this four or six-lot subdivision that's before you. Ask the applicant, so, let me just step back a couple of steps. Somebody owns a large parcel of land, he's going to put in roads, create lots, sell the lots, put houses on or not, sell the lots. And those lots are gonna have houses on them, and those people are gonna use those roads. So you want to ask the developer right up front, "Are you planning to ask us to accept these roads as public ways?" And he's gonna say yes, or he's gonna say no. If he says yes, he says, "Then I want you to prepare documents where you call out easements." In other words, you reserve to yourself the easements over all of the public ways, and then prepare documents for our town council to review. For when you're ready to convey those to the town, we will accept the right-of-way. So if he doesn't do that, what happens is there's something called the derelict fee statute that says that if it's silent, if no express language is in a deed, and your deed is described as running by Smith Street, you own up to the middle of Smith Street. So that means that everybody in this new subdivision owns to the middle of the road, and then if the town wants to go and accept it as a public road...
You give everybody's permission.
You gotta get everybody's permission. So ideally, going forward, you want a developer, because why is any developer gonna want to own the road? He's not going to. But you can't force him to turn it over to you, because that would be taking of property, it's valueless property, but taking property without compensation. But you just ask him, "Are you planning to keep the roads? Are you gonna plow and maintain these roads forever?" I think the answer's no. Say, "Then we'd like you to keep a right-of-way over these roads and be prepared to convey them to the town, if that's your intent."
If it's silent and it just remains a private road, and they each own to the middle, it does not allow them to stop something right on in one of the lots, does it?
Well, no.
Because if it is silent, it shows that they have to maintain the road.
Yeah, so, I mean, you have developers who know what they're doing, and so they have, and you have some that don't. So the ones that know what they're doing, give everybody the right to pass. I mean, so typically, even though you own to the middle of the street, everybody in the subdivision has common, it's a common scheme, if you will, lots are heated out sort of in common scheme. Everybody has the right to pass and repass. Everyone else's lot in the subdivision. So it's not a public way, you and I don't have the right, although if we're going to visit one of those people who are their invitees, so we have the right, but, you know, if it's a closed loop.
But it's just in law, I mean, in terms of the planning and the long term, it invariably results in problems.
Yes.
15, 20 years down the line, because the landowners never want, A, actually upkeep the road, then there's a huge waiting list for it to be accepted by the town. I presume if it was conveyed, when it was new, the town would accept it immediately. I don't know.
And some people don't like fixment, because they don't want people coming down the road.
Yeah. 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 But, you know, most of these are dead ends. You're going down there.
Since I've been on the board, I don't remember any developer getting or requesting public roads, that they are all...
Right, it's bizarre. I grew up where, you know, where I grew up, roads all seemed to be public.
They all were public. You were in the Midwest, I was in the Midwest, eh? You know? And it's public, just like we fight about the sewers here. It's public back there, come on. But I have gotten a distinct impression that the town doesn't really want to have any more public roads.
You know, it's just delaying a big problem that's gonna be more costly to fix later.
Sure it is.
And you don't get the road construction to standard, you know?
But it sounds like the local culture is people want their subdivision roads to remain private?
I don't think so.
You don't think so?
A lot of people know when they...
I don't think about it.